Our next agenda is public input. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak this evening? Thank you, just please state your name and address.
Jill Congdon, 298 High Street. I just wanted to invite everyone to our first PTA meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, September 12th, at 7:00 PM at Eastford Road School. I hope everyone can attend. We're hoping to have a real big turnout. And our membership drive is in full effect. We've already had a lot of members join. And our Scholastic Book Fair will be being held on Tuesday, September 25th, at Eastford Road School, and Thursday, September 27th, at Trouton Street School and West Street School during the open house times. We hope everyone can either volunteer to help at that event. If so, please contact me to help out, or just come and purchase some books that day. Also, we're running Bemis Scarecrows for Solutions at Bemis Farm, the next, starting this Sunday from 9:00 AM to 4:00, following the next four Sundays at Bemis Farms. Parents can come and create a scarecrow for $15, and all the proceeds will benefit the Southbridge Elementary PTA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Congdon. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak this evening?
I would just like to say something, Mrs. Congdon. First of all, let me tell you how much the principals and the teachers and the parents have really told me how much they appreciated the open houses that you did to begin the school year at West Street and Trouton Street, and I think at Eastford Road as well. Great turnout, great turnout, and a lot of participation, and that's what we hopefully want to build upon. So, thank you very much.
We had over 300 families come to both orientations at both the schools, and the turnout was unbelievable. At one point, the line was out the door, and the school was, both schools were packed with people just so excited to start the school year. It was really more than we expected, it was great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to point out, as Mrs. Congdon mentioned, the Eastford Road School Open House is scheduled for on the 25th of September. However, this morning I was on the district website, and it's labeled on the page for Eastford Road School as the 27th. And the 27th is the correct date for Trouton Street School, and our West Street School Open House had been moved, in case people weren't aware, from the 26th to the 27th. But I need, we need to get it out there that Eastford Road Open House is not the 27th as stated on the website, but rather the 25th. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who'd like to speak this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda number three. Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Dr. Domingo?
Present.
Mrs. Donovan?
Present.
Mr. Lazzo?
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Present.
Dr. O'Leary?
Present.
Mrs. Principay?
Present.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Present.
Seven present.
Thank you, seven present. Our next agenda will be approval of the minutes of our regular school committee meeting, August 14th, 2012. Is there any corrections to those minutes?
Still moved.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
In a second, excuse me. So, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any corrections or anything for the minutes? Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you. One thing that I wanted to question was, on the August 14th minutes, page four, Agenda Item Number 13, New Business, the third paragraph, it was stated that Mr. Lazzo made a motion to remove Eric Ealy as the superintendent. That is correct. However, on the next page, page five, second paragraph, the actual vote there says, "Vote to remove Eric Ealy as Southbridge School Superintendent." And I believe that perhaps the Southbridge School should be eliminated to correctly reflect Mr. Lazzo's motion as stated on the previous page.
Thank you. I will have to watch the tape to make that correction. I'm not sure if that is accurate unless Mr. Lazzo remembers his actual statement of that evening, if he mentioned school committee.
The school district.
School district, or just school, Southbridge Schools, in that motion.
I think Kara is correct.
Okay. All right, I will, I will still double check the CD, and we'll get that corrected. Are there any other corrections? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote on that, Max?
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazzo?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Okay. Thank you, minutes passed. The next will be a motion for the special school committee meeting minutes on August 28th, 2012. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you, in a second. Thank you, have a motion in a second. Is there any corrections, changes in those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seven in favor. Any opposed? Opposed, okay. So, all in favor, motion passes for the minutes. All right. Our next agenda item is reports, but before we start the reports, we, I wanted to just make a couple of changes to how we run the meetings. The last few meetings, I feel I have to change the ways we do it because they, to me, they have not been as organized as I'd like. So, through the Robert's Rules, I'd like to make a change to follow the Robert's Rules more closely, and that would be that during any of the debates or agendas that we have, that each member up here on the school committee will have two turns to speak to each agenda item. That will limit the length of a lot of the meetings going on. So, that is found in the Robert's Rules in Chapter Four. And to also remind everyone that we're debating issues and not personalities. So, I just wanted to make that change so that everyone knows this evening that you will have two times per agenda item to make your comments and statements towards those agenda items. So, with that being said, I would like to go to reports, and our first report is from our new representative of the Student Advisory Committee, Ms. Faith Masharia. Welcome to the meetings and to the committee.
Thank you.
Do you have any reports for us to speak about this evening?
You don't have to, you don't have to.
No.
It's sort of scary up here, first time.
So, there are no reports this evening. If you have any questions, you can ask Mr. Ealy, myself, or anyone.
It's scary when you've been up here, like, five years.
Yeah, take it from me. Anyway, so, you know, feel comfortable, and I can give you my phone number and all that stuff if you have questions. Our next meeting will be the 25th, and you'll be there, too. Mr. Lazzo?
I would just like to welcome Faith to the school board. It's always a pleasure working with the students, great at the meeting, and the only advice I can give you is constantly smile, and don't be afraid to represent your student body. Thank you.
Anyone else?
She's really grabbing the gavel.
Thank you, no. Moving it on my waist, Mr. Lazzo. Anyways, okay, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, number seven, which is our presentations. And this evening, we will have a quarterly progress review accelerated improvement plan update, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, by Ms. Ava Mitchell, Associate Commissioner, and Dr. Nadine Bonda, Accelerated Improvement Plan Monitor. Welcome, ladies.
Thank you, thank you so much for the welcome. We really enthusiastic about joining you tonight amid all the energy of the new school year, with a new leadership team onboard that has brought new energy and a brand-new middle high school. We are here tonight to deliver the third quarterly progress report that goes from April to June, and I wanted to say a little bit about why we are coming to here, coming here tonight to talk about, to deliver a report that really covers a description of where the district was at the end of last school year. So, I want to remind all of you, and some of you who are newer to the school committee, that the district and the district's leadership has written an accelerated improvement plan that specifically focuses on the core changes needed to really accelerate the improvement of student achievement, is focused on teaching and learning specifically, and what changes the district needs to make in order to support that those accelerated changes to practice and performance. And so, that's what we come every month to monitor. So, Dr. Nadine Bonda, as most of you know, is a monitor for Southbridge Public Schools. And by, in the monitoring process, she looks at the information that the superintendent and his leadership team provides, and talks to people at all levels in the system to really understand what kind of progress the district is making with respect to the accelerated improvement plan each and every month. And then, we come here every quarter. So, as we deliver this message that's really about the end of last school year, our purpose can be defined as looking back so we can plan forward. So, this is an opportunity to reflect on the results, not so we get stuck there, but so that this can serve as a benchmarking opportunity to say, "Here's where we were then," and start thinking about, "Okay, what can we do to remove any obstacles that may have been in place so that the plan can really move forward and accelerate the rate of improvement in the system?" We understand that there has been quite a lot of work that's happened this summer. We're not prepared to talk to you about that tonight. We will be coming back after we finish with our summative report that describes the progress in the, over the course of the year and through the summer, and reflects on the MCAS results that will be released around September 19th. So, that will be the Year in Review Report that ends up going to the Board of Education, the Commissioner, and to all of you, so you can think about what rate of progress and change would you like to see for the upcoming school year. So, back to the report tonight, as the monitor is going through some of the findings at the end of the year, what we want you to think about, what we're hoping you'll think about, is what kinds of work, what kind of ways can we support this work really taking traction in this new context for the upcoming school year? And we will first answer any questions and talk about some of the next steps that we're planning to support the work and continue partnering with Southbridge Public Schools.
Good evening. As Ava said, this report goes from April to June of 2012. As you know, the Accelerated Improvement Plan for the district was rewritten in the late spring and accepted by the Department of Education on April 27th. So, the, this report is based on the goals and initiatives of that new accelerated improvement plan. Because Southbridge was late in developing a plan that had the potential to increase student achievement, implementation remains at this stage largely a technical nature, and is just beginning to promote change in the district in some areas. During this time, there was a review and analysis at central office level of data, but it was informal until the summer, when professional development was held for administrators on analyzing data. But the superintendent has stated that the district leadership team understands that the analysis of data is crucial for improvement of the 2012-2013 school year, and this is particularly true since he's built a largely new leadership team. During this time, I was in the district and interviewed two principals, the Special Education Director, the English Language Learner Intern, the Southbridge Education Association President, and a group of very active parents and community members. From this group, I heard some common concerns. I heard that there was a need for more and better communication with all stakeholders in the district. I heard that there was a need for high expectations for all students and all employees. I heard that there was a need for an accountability system that supports high expectations, that there were concerns that politics sometimes get in the way of helping to improve Southbridge Schools. Several groups raised issues about the high school in particular. These factors brought into doubt for some parents and administrators that there continues to be a sense of urgency in the district. A renewed effort to reach out to all stakeholders in the district in the 2012-2013 school year will be essential. There were three strategic objectives that were outlined in this Accelerated Improvement Plan. The first objective is to implement high-quality curriculum and instruction programs to support the achievement of all students. Curriculum and development for mathematics and English language arts continued during this period. Teams of teachers are working with Achievement Network, or ANET as they're called, to complete the curriculum, and in fact, the first quarter's curriculum was expected to be completed by the return to school and rolled out during the first two days of professional development to all teachers. Supplemental materials to augment an older math program were being purchased to align teaching with the 2011 mass curriculum frameworks. The reports of school committee meetings show that you've received two presentations on this curriculum work. A document called the Southbridge Standard defines what high-quality instruction looks like in all classes, and according to the superintendent, this document was vetted by administrators, teachers, the school committee, and parents, and a community group. It contains learning strategies for all students, but it particularly addresses language development for English language learners and ways to approach special education students. The district did not take steps to train, support, or hold teachers accountable for implementing the Response to Intervention, called RTI, strategies as was originally planned in the Accelerated Improvement Plan, but this was put off until this summer. In order to support all students using RTI and the Integrated Service Model, ongoing training must be provided for all teachers throughout this school year, and schedules that support these methods must be implemented in all classes. The district collected no formal data this quarter to show if any of its effects are taking root or having a positive effect. So, there was no formal data collected on the cumulative results of learning walks, on informal observations by principals, on formal evaluations of teachers or principals, on achievement of students and subgroups as demonstrated by benchmark testing, or on common assessments. A key part of ensuring increased student achievement is using learning walks and student achievement data to identify each school's needs and provide support targeted to those needs, as was clearly stated in Southbridge's Accelerated Improvement Plan. Strategic objective number two was to establish a data-driven culture to support and monitor the achievement of all students. This is in the early stage of development. Galileo testing was done for students in grades K to 5. The Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment reported that the testing was not done with fidelity at any grade, despite the accelerated improvement goal of 100% of students taking the assessment. And no analysis was done on a district level until this summer, when administrators worked to look particularly at grade six special education students and the results of testing with those students. The district submitted raw data on attendance by subgroup. However, there was no analysis of that data, no plans for how the data would be used, and it's unclear whether 80% of the students demonstrated continued improvement on these assessments, as was noted in the Accelerated Improvement Plan. A data inquiry model was developed and revised. According to the superintendent, data teams have not yet begun to use the revised model, but were to be trained for it this summer to be used this school year. Although principals did informal observations, it was not documented as specified in the Accelerated Improvement Plan whether 85% of administrators are conducting these walkthroughs and providing specific feedback to teachers based on indicators of high-quality instruction. The district and the Teachers Association were in the process of working through a new teacher evaluation document, but as of the writing of this document, it had not been finalized. Parent Advisory Councils for English Language Learners and Special Education were just beginning their work, but had not, at the writing of this report, been sustained in such a way that would be likely to have an effect on student achievement or on student attendance. Interviews with parents, community members, and the Special Education Director said that a few meetings were held this quarter, but no continued sustained effort to involve special education parents occurred. Therefore, the accelerated improvement goal of a 50% increase in the participation of parents of ELL students on the ELL Parent Advisory Committee was not met. Consequently, implementation of this objective was on a technical level. With no formal data analysis having been conducted at a district level this quarter, it's hard to determine whether efforts are taking root or having a positive effect. Strategic objective number three was to provide high-quality professional development programs to support the achievement of all learners. Every teacher in grades 2 to 8 is now assigned to a data team, and they will be receiving coaching this year by ANET. At the administrative retreat during the summer, the administration began to learn how to analyze data and how to develop plans for implementation of their findings. There was two days of professional development for all teachers in grades 2 to 8 on the first quarter's curriculum, both in ELLA and MF. This quarter, administrators trained, this past quarter, in the Southbridge Standard indicators of high-quality instruction, and then principals began to train teachers on using that standard. However, no data was collected on the use of all parts of the Southbridge Standard, so it is unclear how many teachers are implementing all or some parts of this protocol. Excuse me. The district planned, excuse me, very sorry. The district planned to promote understanding of the components of the Accelerated Improvement Plan in the community, was posted on the website, discussed in televised school committee meetings. However, there was no targeted community outreach, and most parents interviewed did not know what the Accelerated Improvement Plan was or how to find it on the website. So, for this objective, technical implementation is also just beginning. A base is just beginning to be established in order for schools to begin to show progress in student achievement. In summary, some technical aspects of the revised Accelerated Improvement Plan were implemented this year. It's critically important for the district to be ready to implement the plan this fall so that it can make changes to administrator and teacher practices and dramatically impact student achievement. It is also important that the district engage parents and the larger community in a significant way to bring them in as partners in the education process. The district needs to focus on understanding the important role of data in determining progress on everything from attendance to supervision and evaluation to student achievement. The district will need to systematically analyze and put in place detailed plans as a result of the data analysis to inform all aspects of school district actions. The superintendent must ensure that principals and central office administrators are equipped with the tools that they need to lead the schools and the district, and accountability of all personnel is a priority. Rich communication also needs to be a priority. The superintendent should develop a communication plan that is reviewed periodically. The district needs to ensure that changes are impacting learning in the classroom level, that all principals are accountable for all aspects of their schools, that central office administrators are accountable for guiding the work that is done in schools, that teachers are held accountable for needed changes in practice, and that student-level data is documented, analyzed, and used to plan important next steps to promote increased student achievement.
So, before we go into the questions and then talk about next steps, I want to just say that we recognize that the work on the Accelerated Improvement Plan occurs in a broad context of changes and circumstances happening in the Southbridge Public Schools. We are, you all know what those are, and so, the purpose of our reports tonight are to deliver to you as governing body members, school committee members, the information that we have about the implementation of the plan. You should know that in our, we should let you know that in the summative report, that is the report that we share with the board, we're going to describe more the full picture of all the contextual changes that have happened in the district, such as the building of the new middle high school, the hiring of a new leadership team, and so on. So, having said that, we know that there's a lot of work that you all have been doing here as school committee members, and we recognize that, and we're hoping that these reports are reports that can help give you the information you need to ask us good questions and to engage in a constructive dialogue about how we can work together to help Southbridge move forward. So, in keeping that goal in mind, we're wondering if you have any questions about the report that reflects up until the end of the school year that I assume you have in front of you?
Anyone have any questions at this time? Excuse me, Dr. O'Leary, go ahead.
Excuse me, thank you, Chair. Am I to understand that the deficits you articulated now are the same ones that were present earlier in the year? Or is this a new report with new deficits?
So, this is the third report. There are some things that have been addressed that weren't addressed in the first quarter, and what this report represents are the change, where the district was in the third quarter. Now, in the summative report, we'll talk about how that change has progressed over time to give you the picture of the year in review.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If there are no further questions? Oh, Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you. Thank you both for coming this evening. My first question was, Dr. Bonda had mentioned that you will be back with your Year in Review and your summative report. When will that be?
So, the MCAS data, as I mentioned, comes out around September 19th. We'll be using that to inform the summative report. We'll be sending the draft to the superintendent. So, by the time we are ready to publish that report, it'll be in October, around the end of October.
I think we've tentatively set you to come back at the, the second meeting in October, which will be the fourth Tuesday in October.
Right. That's right. Mrs. Donovan, do you have any?
I just have, I know I only have two turns, so I'm trying to think of what question would be most important.
Thank you.
I guess, what, but the question that I would like to ask is, there are certain areas that you state that the district has failed to do, such as data analysis or failure to collect data on DIBELS, DRP, Degrees of Power Reading, things like that, the Galileo testing. Do you, or does our plan-monitor provide the how-to do that? Like, I know that learning walks are being done, I know DIBELS testing is being done, I know DRPs are being done, I know certain grades are doing Galileo testing, so there is data that is being collected. Now, from, from what I'm reading, it appears that perhaps it's being collected at the school level, and it is the responsibility of the principal that is looking at this analysis and then relaying it back to the teachers. It appears to me that you're looking more of a broader spectrum of the district relative to these issues, and I'm wondering, how does the district do that form? How does it take that role, I don't want to say away from the principals, but in conjunction with the principals, so that you can look at it and say, "Yes, it is the district now has a operative role in this data analysis"? Is, are we told how to do that?
I'm going to turn that back over to your superintendent.
If I can help you out just a little bit, let me tell you what we've done since we got this report, is we've, we've refashioned our district data team to include principals, so that the principals are bringing the data that their analysis, that they're doing at the building level, to the district level for a whole district data analysis. So, we've taken a step over the summer to kind of refashion and repurpose our district data team to meet that goal, because I think, what I think the question is, and I think what I heard loud and clear, was we're not doing the analysis at the district level as thoroughly as we need to do it. And, and we have heard that, and I think we have a plan in place to do that, and then funnel it back down to create that through line to the classroom teacher. And I think what we've been doing, which I frankly feel is better, but I won't argue with you, I, I feel like it's being done at the with you, I feel like it's being done at the building level, on the team level, and that's where, on the ground where it happens, but I do understand the need for the district to see an overview of that. And so we've kind of looked at it both ways at this point, if that helps. I don't know if that kind of gives you a sense of where we're heading, and our new plan, I think, reflects that.
Thank you.
Any more, Mrs. Donovan?
No.
Anyone else have a question? Seeing no other further questions, we can move on to the next.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. So just some next steps. The superintendent, Eli, already mentioned that we are looking to come back at the next meeting with the summative report. Also, just wanted to let, also let you know that one of the things that we're doing right now is we are reviewing the draft plan that Southbridge has submitted for, that updates their objectives, initiatives, and activities for the current school year, the 2012-2013 school year. So there was a considerable amount of thought and work put into that plan by the district and superintendent and his leadership team and the plan manager, which, have they already met superintendent Eli?
Some of them I've met, Mr. Lefton Livingston, I want to introduce him here in a few minutes.
All right. So the new plan manager that the superintendent will introduce, Paul Livingston, the department has provided to give some support to the development of that plan. And so the next step will be providing some feedback, and when the MCAS data comes out to incorporate the new targets that the state has identified for all districts, and we hope to have a finished plan that includes the new targets by October the 15th to give the district enough time to reflect on that data. And so we'll be continuing to partner with Southbridge to get there, and then we'll be back to give you the information that we hope helps you in your role as school committee members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Dr. Domingo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I think I'm going to ask the same question I think I asked last time. These improvement plans have a purpose for Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as an assurance that needs to be provided to you that we're going in the right direction. How long are you, is the department really going to, you know, tolerate at best, if that's the correct word? Areas that we just are not addressing properly? Again, what is the timeline for us to really pull it all together collectively as a community before there might be another intervention of a different sort?
So I think I heard a question and a comment, so the comment was, so the question was, how long do we see this process taking? And the comment had to do with the purpose of this process. So I want to sort of clarify that first. So we consider the purpose of this process to help districts that have been struggling the longest with the most challenges, a way to focus on those core issues that impact classroom learning most closely. So recognizing that our Level Four districts have reasons for being where they are, we believe that the only way to accelerate improvement is to, based on our research analysis of turnaround, district-wide turnaround, to focus on a few narrow set of objectives, to systematically monitor their implementation, to look at results carefully using evidence, then make mid-course corrections when needed in order to make those changes happen. So we, the way we look at this is this is something that we believe will help Southbridge move out of Level Four status. So we do see the turnaround effort district-wide as being generally a two-year or more process. So we see this as being into the first year of this kind of accelerated effort. Now, having said that, every year, the commissioner reviews the data for all of our districts and looks at our summative reports and may have some questions, but we are right now seeing this as at least a two-year turnaround process.
And what happens after two years if there's still significant deficiencies that you have discovered and the focus is quite not there? I just don't know what the final consequences, I guess, can be if we don't really, you know, show, demonstrate an improvement that's expected.
Right. So we're really looking to understand whether student achievement is on the rise, whether the turnaround plan has been implemented, whether there are currently district systems in place that can support strong schools, they can establish the conditions for effective schools, and whether there is strong evidence of sustainability of practice without continued Level Four support. And so if Level Four support is what seems to be the need in order to get the district to the next level, then that's the support that the commissioner is likely to provide. If that is no longer necessary, then that's not the case. So one thing that is important to note, in our new model for accountability assistance, so some of you go back a long time, right? So we had this big change in the department. We used to designate districts in certain status, like underperforming, and say, okay, well, put together a plan and do better. Now we say we're not going to designate a district in a status unless we provide an equal amount of assistance to help them with what the challenges are facing. So Level Four is both an accountability status and a recognition that a certain level of support is needed. And so we'll have to look at that thoroughly to make the right decision.
I still haven't heard the answer. What happens if we fail continuously and we don't, we don't demonstrate that we have the tools and we have implemented over the extended period of time, however long that seems to be? What is the consequence? Or is the department willing to support us next 10, 15 years until?
So again, that's the commissioner's decision. So that's the best answer I can give. And so there are a range of considerations he needs to make in making that determination.
Mr. Lazo?
Dr. Mitchell, I share the same frustrations. I'm one of the longstanding committee members. We've had a tremendous amount of optimism in the years that I've been on, as far as turning around, meeting benchmarks, building a new school. We've basically marched to every tune, and I am kind of worried also of the consequences, which probably are well-deserved. But I think what's happening is, we have kids that are going through the schools, they're graduating, they're going off to college, and it doesn't seem to me that the, we're getting traction, as you would say. And I share the same opinion of, okay, it's two years. What happens after two years if this doesn't move forward? We've went through superintendents, administrators, teachers, and various professionals that have come in and come in with a great optimistic outlook and good math programs and whatever programs we're going to get in. Accountability, which we implemented at various, and I really do welcome the assistance of the state as far as support. We have some great teachers in our system, and we have some great administrators in our system, and I think that, I'm concerned that as kids go through, are they getting what they deserve while we're in this holding pattern, so to speak? It seems like we've kind of stalled, you know? I don't know. I see little things, but I don't see the movement and the rolling forward that I expected.
So the most important thing that we'll keep an eye on is the results. We want to know if it's working. And we are here as partners in this process. We're not looking to make any recommendations for any action, and ultimately, it's the board's decision at the highest levels of the accountability system, which is the determination you're asking about. But what we're trying to do right here is benchmark where Southbridge is at the end of the first year of the implementation and have a strategy in place to keep the district moving forward. So what we've heard from Superintendent Eli is that there were a number of foundational pieces that he wanted to put in place, and we are looking to see an accelerated trajectory over the next year now that there's, some of those things have been worked on. Is that, I don't want to evade the question. I want to make sure I answered it directly and gave you what you need, but also in a complete and truthful way. Is that, did that answer?
I think you're answering it in a truthful way, and I think you're putting your best efforts forward, as we are. But it wasn't too long ago that the actually predicted that we would be out of underperforming within a year and a half. One of the big things was the school, and I think the town grabbed that one by the horn, so to speak, and wrestled that one, took it down, and built a new school. And there were some other benchmarks that we were supposed to hit that we were hitting on a rapid pace under deal handling. And I think that, you know, there has been changes, and I just, it seems to be frustrating, that's all. We are revitalized and renewed in a new vision now, okay? And it's going to be two years, and we're going to take care of this problem, and I'm behind it 100%. This is what I heard two years before that, and I'm like, okay, maybe I've been here too long, it's time for me to go, but, you know, we'll continue to work. You know, I'm not a quitter. I'm a worker, and I'm an optimism, optimist, and I think that the kids are all worth it. And our employees, it's just that it doesn't seem to be, there's an end to this tunnel. We don't see, we see daylight, and all of a sudden, the light goes on, and it's, okay, what happened now? We're going to try something new. It was like you talked of Galileo. We were so hepped up on Galileo that we wanted, you know, full steam ahead, and then later on, finding out that, you know, we aborted Galileo. After all the money we spent, I didn't feel real successful about that. So it's things like the new things, the new ideas, I'm not against that, I'm just saying, I hope that we can hold the faith in what's going to happen in the next two years. And it does happen, because being at a Level Four for as long as we've been in a Level Four, you know, it's just frustrating, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Lazo. Dr. Domingo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is not to continue discussion. I would really like to direct that to you and Mr. Eli. I really think it would be welcomed by the school committee to have a presentation by the superintendent before these quarterly progress reports are released by the state once we have had our feedback, so we are all informed, we can debate these issues, we can ask questions internally before we are briefed by the Department of Education. We haven't had that in the past, for the past three quarterly reports, and I would really like to see that on the agenda before that goes to public presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll look into that. Anyone else with any questions? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. The question that I have is relative to the process of these objectives or these initiatives. A lot of them, the process that we are in, a lot of them are at the technical implementation part. What follows the technical implementation?
So that's a really good question. And so the technical implementation stage rating recognizes that before you can really fully implement something, put the practices in place, people can start changing what they do on a day-to-day basis, you have to do the work of setting up the structures and the process. These are technical steps. But getting people to change practice is something that takes time, monitoring, accountability, persistence, and so we want to recognize where the district is on that continuum, knowing that it does take some time to get there. Does that address?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you very. Did you have something, Dr. O'Leary? I didn't see your hand. Go right ahead. Sorry, I didn't see your hand.
I'm sorry to, maybe I'm just being thick, or I'm expecting an answer that I can't get from you now, and maybe it will come in in the summative report. But again, the things you articulated today, are these, does this represent progress in any fashion from where we were the last time you presented to us?
So the short answer would be, yeah. So this is a revised accelerated improvement plan.
Yes, ma'am.
And in that regard, it's progress, because this accelerated improvement plan was finally accepted by the state, and the view was that the district was on the right track to begin to do that. And now, through this quarter, the district has put in place some of the foundational steps to launch that. So we're hoping to see a good launch this year with some of the technical, some of the foundation in place and ready for that to go.
Okay, would you expect that at this target that you just mentioned, our foundations will all be in place? We were talking about foundations six months ago. I mean, you know, at what point does the foundation stop and we get moving? What, you know?
So things like principals and other administrators have now been trained to do data analysis. So not only to collect data in their schools, but really to look at it carefully, to analyze the data, and then to begin to work with teachers so that teachers can inform their instruction through the use of data. So those first steps have now been laid, that foundation has now been laid, that's happened this summer. So this, during this report, reporting time, the district data team was developed, and they began to learn about the data that was, that existed in the district. Then this summer, it was taken a step further, so administrators have been trained in how to use that, and teachers have begun to be trained. Teachers are now on grade-level data teams. So we expect to see that by the first set of benchmarks, that the data will actually be collected, it will be analyzed, and it will be used to begin to inform maybe classroom instruction, and then at a later time, individual student instruction. So it's an iterative process. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you, ladies. I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Donovan, you've already had your two terms.
Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If none, thank you, ladies, again, for coming this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a safe drive home.
We applaud the message to focus on the issues and hope that we can be a part of moving to the next.
Thank you. Moving on to presentation B, before and after-school programming. Ms. Amy Allen, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Good evening. I believe I'm here to clarify some questions that you all had at your last meeting about the before and after-school programs, which are funded by the Title I grant. I wrote the Title I grant this year, and I included in it 20 positions for certified teachers to participate in before and after-school programming at Eastford Road, Charlton Street, and West Street schools. I also allotted one slot for Trinity Catholic Academy, because we are responsible to include our private schools that are Title I eligible in those grants. I worked with Mr. Lab and Mr. Montigny and Mrs. Shaw to get these programs together and to allot the teachers for each. So at the current time, I believe you all got something in your packet about the programs. I gave you a short blurb about how they're going to be conducted. We will have a morning program at West Street and Charlton Street and Eastford Road. At West Street and Charlton Street, it's early intervention, they're going to be doing an author-study program, and that's primarily for grades one and two. We're trying to lay the foundation with those students. At Eastford Road, it's going to be skill-based learning, alphabet, numeracy, the basic skills for those early interventions. And then the after-school programs will be more MCAS-based at the three-to-five level at West Street and Charlton Street, and then at the K level, they'll be enhancing the skills that they're learning in class, but they'll also be literacy and math-based for Eastford Road. I don't know at the time, at this time, how Mrs. Brouillard plans to use that time, but we will be progress monitoring what they're doing at Trinity as well, because I do have to report back to the DESC on that Title I grant. Does anybody have any questions?
Do we have any questions? I don't know who came first, so I'll just start this end. All right. Lauren, Ms. McLaughlin?
Through you, through the chair to the speaker. Hi, Ms. Allen. Question, at the top of the page that we got, do you have that in front of you?
Yep.
It indicates the teacher slots for Eastford Road School, it says three for PM programs. However, when you go down in the fourth paragraph, it said the morning program would consist of?
And that's a, that's a change that I, that's an error. And that's, that's a change that I, that's a, that's an error.
Oh, okay.
It's going to be one in the morning and then two in the afternoon. At the, at the time that I wrote this, we hadn't decided with Ms. Shaw how she wanted to place that. So there will be one morning and two afternoon.
May I ask another question?
Yes, go ahead.
And how would students be either selected, targeted with this, would a mass mailing go out to all families with targeted assistance? How do you envision that?
Well, in speaking with Mr. Montigny and Mr. Lab particularly, because they've been, they've been running before and after school programs at the elementaries for some time, what we're trying to look at is, particularly for the after-school programs, is students that are on the bubble. Students that are just on the bubble from going to warning to needs improvement, and students that are on the bubble from going from needs improvement to proficient. Because these are the students that are going to change our CPI. These are the students that are going to, are, change our MCAS levels and, and make us, make our improvement the greatest, make the greatest student achievement, and have the greatest capability of doing that. These are the kids that we don't usually target, because we always target the lowest of the low, but we're not hitting those kids that are on the bubble. So we're really looking at targeting those kids that are on the bubble in those schools. And actually, despite what our report says, West Street and Charlton Street actually have a lot of data for the elementary school kids through their DRPs, through their DIBBLES, through pre and post tests that the teachers do in the classrooms. So they have students that they are going to be targeting, particularly because they need this remediation. And it'll be the same for the morning program, except that we're also in the morning program, they want to include those students that need to be dropped off in the morning. Our district overall is eligible for Title I because of our low achievement levels and our high poverty level. So all of our kids are really eligible to participate via Title I. So any student that they choose would be a good choice at this, at this point. But we do want to make sure that those students that need to get dropped off early are going to be eligible for these programs, and then the after-school will be those kids that we really want to push up that are on the bubble.
Thank you.
Any more?
Anything you guys want to add? Okay.
You're all set, Mrs. McLaughlin, for this time? All right, Dr. Domingo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the speaker. Have you conducted a survey of these buildings to know how many students expressed or families expressed interest? And has that been calculated to determine the number of staff?
No. Nope. I, actually, this grant was due before school even started. I inherited this from Mr. Zanghi, and so I had to get all this information in. I tried to make a guess, and I wanted to give them as much support as I could. I allotted $50,000 for these after-school programs, and there, there weren't any allotted through Title I last year at all. So, you know, I tried to do the max, and if they need more, I'll try to get it through a race to the top grant or another grant. But we, we want, we would like to get the maximum, you know, among the students.
So what happens if you have 90%, 100% of the students express interest? Because as you, as you mentioned, as a district, being Title I district, all our students are entitled to Title I funds and approach that's being used. So we cannot selectively attract students who happen to be underperforming regardless. The programs have to be open to our entire student population. Excuse me. And my, my worry, maybe, you know, completely insignificant is if you are overwhelmed of the buildings and this staffing projection simply cannot take care of our student population, then what do we do? Maybe Mr. Wigan with the budget or Title I funding help or somebody?
I'd like to speak to that because I've been, I'm in charge, I'm Dr. Jordan, the ELL Coordinator. I'm in charge of the Title III grant, and I have written in some padding there for a great deal of before and after school help. That is a guaranteed grant, and that will supplement if, if the reading program needs supplementation, is that what, that's what we'll use it for. But what I'm working on now, and I'm not ready to report on because I'm waiting to hear about other grants, is if I don't, if we don't need those staff there, then we're working on a before and after science initiative. Right now, we're going to see what her numbers are, and then we're, because there's two other grants I'm waiting on. And those will, those will add a great deal of, of supplement to other grants besides the Title III. So we have addressed the fact that there may be an overwhelming number, and we have staff in the background funded through Title III to address that need.
Thank you. The program is supposed to start October 1st. Is that still the case? We're about three weeks, not even, from October 1st, and you're still anticipating the start of the program at that date?
Yes.
Informing the parents, everybody will know?
Yes.
Everything will be?
Yes. Mr. Montigny's staff, I believe, has already written up all the letters to go home with the parents with the description of the programs, and he and Mr. Lab are working on that together. So the, the footwork is, is done. It just has to go home to the parents.
One last question, Madam Chair. How was the content of the preschool and after-school programming decided? Based on what in order to really help, as you said, our population that may, may need some attention?
One of the principals want to address that? Ms. Montigny?
I worked with the principals on this. I wrote the grant, and I worked with them on how they wanted to run it, so.
I just wanted to say that the Charlton Street, since 2005, we've had programs for and after school. We've averaged after-school 50 students in the morning, 25. As far as the content, strictly based on literacy, looking, we have a new paradigm now with first graders being there. So we're, we're looking forward to having older kids working with the younger kids as models to assist them in a quest to develop reading by third grade and advanced after. So as far as everyone that did it, looked at the Newberry and Caldecott authors did a medalist in, with the books they publish, and these are the texts that we'd like to use. So for higher order thinking skills and accelerated reading.
I, I was just hoping that, that maybe you're going to devote some time to the students finishing their homework, because a lot of our students, the environment that they come from may not be the most conducive to, you know, peace and creative work.
As far as a tutorial program?
Yeah.
That could be a whole, a whole nother issue to address. But right now, you know, the program would go from Monday through Thursday, in the morning from 7:30, 8:30, and the afternoons would go from 2:45 to 4 o'clock. So we could spend probably in the afternoon 15 minutes or so to address homework issues also.
Because doing homework is reinforcing the same skills that you're trying to teach, except they have to practice them at home. So I think it might be, you know, going both ways, achieving the content and getting their, their work done. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Again, to you, I really think that after the program has been in place, maybe at the end of the year, the testings are going to be done, the program will be running, concluded that we received a report on, on attendance, how many students we had per grade, obviously through data analysis that we are all trained for now, how those students performed, probably May, June, whenever. So this is going to run through April 11th, so by the end of the year, I certainly would like to see a presentation.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mr. Lozo?
Yes, Ms. Allen. The, I asked, I was very interested in the program itself. At the previous meeting, it was a, more of a financial discussion, not a content discussion. And it, it had shades of ELT, okay? And although I am a supporter of ELT, a proper ELT program, I think that we had a disastrous ELT program. And I think that when this first came forward, I said, geez, is this academic-driven? And then after the presentation tonight, I, I look forward to supporting this. Not only is it academic-driven, it's where we need to be concentrating on as far as our workforce. It was nice to have the extra money at the middle school and the West Street School at that time, but knitting and dancing has nothing to do with MCAS scores or mathematics or science advancement or anything like that. So I, I really want to thank you tonight for bringing academics to the forefront again, and to help those kids that are having a hard time and to get that extra time after school and before school. And because it is academic-driven, I think I can support this. I think it's fantastic.
Thank you. And, and just something added that's not on here. Part of the Title I funding to, that even though that the middle school and the high school are not technically Title I schools, I can flex some of the funds to the middle and high school. And I did put in for an after-school position at the middle school for a teacher to help with the Wilson Reading Program with our sixth graders particularly, who are at least three grades below grade level. And I also put in for 10 slots for after-school credit recovery for juniors and seniors at the high school through the VHS program that's recently developed. They just recently developed an after-school credit recovery through VHS, and I put in for a position for a person to monitor that after-school credit recovery. So the 10 seats and the person to monitor that, and that will be a spring pilot.
Thank you.
Mr. Ely?
VHS is Virtual High School.
I'm sorry.
For those educators, the people that aren't, don't know what VHS is, stand for, VHS is Virtual High School.
Is there any other questions? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. Through you, I think maybe to Mr. Wigan, just for clarification, when we had our finance meeting on the 28th, one of the things that we were looking at was to authorize the creation of a before-school program at each of these three schools. And then there was, are obviously going to be grant-funded, and then there was that $4 per day. Are we looking to still do that? And was that specifically for the before-school part of this total program? Or is it in fact a before and after that we're looking at?
That particular motion was to deal with the before-school portion of this. Certainly we want to have an after-school program as well. And I think when we brought it back to Director Allen and indicated that you folks wanted to hear more information, we felt it was timely to bring to you the after-school portion because we knew that was in the works.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'm all set. Thank you. Dr. Domingo?
So what is the proposal now? Are we maintaining the, the proposal would still be to continue charging $4 in the morning?
The proposal that is on the table is for a before-school program. The $4 is a contingency fee. And what I'm hearing Director Allen saying is, right now, we're 100% guaranteed. The Title I is going to fund this. So we're not going to have to implement that $4 fee at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you. Was this for informational purposes, or is there going to, a motion? Does, would we need to amend the agenda to add a motion on this program, or how does that work?
This program has already been submitted to Title I, so this is going to exist regardless. This is a grant, so we're going to have this, no matter what.
I think it's important to realize also that, that Title I and Title II-A have been consolidated now. And Title I and Title II-A are both federal entitlement grants, so it's based on your demographics, and you just have to do the application. But there are new regulations under the, the title grants that require us. It used to be you could use it as an option. It's now required to have a certain amount of money set aside for extended, what they call extended learning opportunities, or SES with Disseminated Educational Services, a fancy name for extra help, before and after school. So that's why this program's allowed to exist or able to exist now.
So this is, this presentation is informational?
Well, the question was, I think it was on the table. It was table at the last meeting. And before, without getting into all of that, there was some question about whether you have to vote on it. So before, I think, I think it might be wise to take it off the table, and for a future meeting for a vote, if you have to, we have to find out whether or not you're required to vote, and we don't know the answer for that yet. So you have to take it off the table at this meeting if you want to vote down the road.
Mrs. Principay, and then Mr. Lozo.
Well, I would, I would make a motion to take it off the table, and I believe we could do it during this discussion period. So that's my motion to take it off. And I'm really confused as to whether we have to vote this or not. So in case we do, I would like to take it off the table and postpone the vote to the very next school committee meeting, because I don't think per the open meeting laws, we can do it tonight.
We?
Mr. Lozo?
Two, two points. Point one, I think we should take it up under committee actions, okay? I, I understand we keep walking all over presentations. Presentations is a presentation. It's not any voted items. That's past practice and the way I understood it. It's not a big deal. We'll take it off the table. And I am very baffled to say that we don't vote the finances, even though it's a grant. I thought we have to vote the finances.
Thank you, Mr. Lozo. We do have a motion on the table, and just so everyone knows that I did speak with Mr. Glenn Kuchar on this. And Mr. Kuchar said that we can do it under the presentation, or we can do it under unfinished business. I believe it is fine to do the motion. So we do have a motion on the table to take this agenda of the before school, hold on, what is it, number seven? The before-school program to take it off the table and bring it to the next school, postpone it for an action on the next school committee meeting, and I will have an answer as to whether we actually need to vote it or not. So there is a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any other discussion? Dr. Domingo?
Madam Chair, I'm not sure that, that we can do this as, as you have just proposed. I think once it's taken off the table, we need, we can discuss it, and in a separate motion, we can then table it for the next meeting discussion. I don't think you can untable it and wrap it into putting it on agenda for the next meeting. I think it's two separate motions.
I spoke with Mr. Kuchar, and he said that we could do it this way. I spoke with him this afternoon before the meeting, and he, he assured me that this is the appropriate way to do it, to take it off the table and postpone it to the next meeting.
In the same motion?
Yes.
Any other discussion? I have a second by Mrs. Donovan. Okay, so I have a motion and a second, so roll call, please, on this.
Dr. O'Leary?
I'm going to abstain.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
Abstained.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Abstain.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Four yes, three abstain.
So the motion passes, and we will bring this up at the next school committing on the 25th. Our next agenda is, on still under presentations, this was added on. Everybody received an email on this next presentation, and this is a presentation from Dr., Mr. Brian Davies for the Cape Cod trip. Davis, sorry, Mr. Davis, are you here?
Do we need to amend the agenda?
No. Do we need to amend the agenda to add that? Because we put it on before meeting, and it was on the left side.
Good evening. I would like to congratulate Mr. McLaughlin and Mrs. Donovan on your new appointment. A friend of mine once said, be careful what you wish for, but good luck. This is the fourth year about the Cape Cod trip. Faith, our student representative, I believe this is, be her fourth or a third year at least. Is it your third or fourth year going to the Cape? How, how this came about, a friend of mine was the athletic director at Mashpee High School. So we were talking, and he kind of extended the opportunity for the students of Saltbridge to have an opportunity to go down to the Cape on a Friday and stay over at a campground and play a game also on Saturday morning, and then we would return. But what we're, what we're looking for on 9/21/21, approximately noon time, we would ask our principal, if this does get passed, obviously, for an early dismissal, approximately noon time, heading to the Cape. Three teams, the boys and girls soccer team, the field hockey team, approximately 45 students with six to eight adults, including coaches and some parents. We would be staying in a campground in Sandwich, which is right next to Mashpee. We play at Mashpee High School. Friday afternoon, we would have two soccer games going on as well as a field hockey game all at the same time at 4 o'clock. Some of the schools that we will be playing over that weekend are Pope John from Hyannis, Sturgis Charter School, also out of Hyannis, Norset High School, Mashpee High School. The other reason for this, the league that we are in, I mean, we are one of the smaller schools in the league, and, and the schools that we play down the Cape are pretty much the same size enrollment as, as Saltbridge. So it kind of evens the playing field a little more for our student athletes. After that game on Friday, we usually go back to the campground. We buy pizza, or we have a cookout at the campground. And, you know, 10:00, 10:30-ish is the curfew, they go to bed. Saturday morning, 9/22, they'd get up. Breakfast, we pack up everything, head out to, back to Mashpee High. We usually stop, get them a breakfast sandwich. Again, the three teams would be involved in games starting at 10:30. Approximately 1:00, we would pack up, get on the bus, and depending on traffic, we would hope to be back in Saltbridge around 4:00 PM on that Saturday. The cost of the trip for the campground is $15 per student. Spending money is, you know, optional, but they don't really need a lot of spending money. Obviously, we have to have proof of insurance, which myself and Mr. Wiggins have talked about. Couple of things about this trip. I think it's a good team building and bonding, bringing the teams closer together. I think it also says an awful lot about our coaches that are willing to take a day out of the, out of their lives with their families and go above and beyond, spending a day or two days with students. As we know, there's a great, great deal of responsibility there. But I also think that says an awful lot about them. Big Bunny Market in, in town has always been very gracious in helping with water, some hot dogs, hamburgers, and things of that nature. I mean, they go above and beyond. So, that's, you know, something that they've, they've always done. If there's any questions about anything, myself, I'd be happy to answer.
Does anyone have any questions? Dr. D'Amico?
Madam Chair, through you to the superintendent. I don't know if we have this request in printed form for everyone. I, we received it over email, I remember. The practice in the past has been that these kind of trips are first approved by the school or the building administrator and presented to us. And I just wonder if either the practice has changed, or does that exist, and we will get it post-mortem, or?
The, the practice has not changed. This did not come to my desk until Friday, after the packets had gone out. And I have not seen anything in writing on it.
Mr. Davies, do you have the approval of the building principal to take this trip?
We, we had discussed this.
I would respectfully request that that paperwork be put in order because it might be a liability issue. Thank you.
I agree. And that's why I won't recommend this.
You are not recommending?
I am not recommending. I did not recommend this last year because it came in the same way it did tonight, which is after the fact. After the trip had been planned, and I never got anything in writing, and it came to the school committee after the agenda had already been set, and it was added to the agenda. This is the third year in a row this has happened.
Any other questions, discussion? Mr. Lazo?
Oh, we had been working on this since probably the beginning of school, and had been trying to contact different YMCA camp, camp facilities. And we had finally received notice from the campground that we stayed at last year, and they gave their cost and their approval because other camps had already been booked. So, we had been at this, so there's really nothing we could have put into writing prior to this. And we knew that with the time, the time as it is right now, the next meeting, I'm sure, being a few days prior to the, the day of the trip, that we were lax in that sense of not being able to put it into writing formally as we, as we should have. But we didn't have the exact information at that point, as in cost and, and availability.
Mr. Lazo?
Will it be detrimental? Well, I think it is going to be schedule-wise. I, I have a, I'm having a hard time with this. One, I think that the paperwork should come into us in a proper manner, it should be on the agenda. But I'd hate to see the kids lose out on an opportunity. If the administrator is in favor of it, if the superintendent proofs it, and you could forward out the paper to us, I would have no problem voting in favor of this tonight because we pay enough money to a lot of people to check every balance. I, I really do think that I, I don't have a problem voting for it if the administrators, superintendent, athletic director are all on board once it's finalized and forward out the paperwork to us ASAP.
Mr. Ely?
And philosophically, I, I agree with you 100%. It's just my frustration is not getting the paperwork in a timely fashion to get it to you. And, and it would be different if it was the first time. So, that's my frustration. I, I have no problem approving the trip, per se. It's the process that I struggle with. But I don't want the kids punished either, but I will not make a recommendation without anything in writing.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis, is the cost for this, you said there's a cost of $15 per person. Is that what the district absorbs, or is that what each player pays?
It's, it's what each individual pays.
And the district covers the cost of transportation?
Yes, ma'am.
And one more question. Chaperones, how are chaperones determined with the trip?
Coaches and some of their spouses.
Do you know what the ratio is?
Six, six to eight, so we have 45 students. So, we're looking at one per six, roughly.
Thank you.
Dr. D'Amico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the superintendent. Mr. Ely, you set the school committee agenda. Why did you feel it was important that this item be included on this agenda if you're not going to support it?
Excuse me, I'm, I'm going to answer that, Dr. D'Amico, because it came to my attention, and I thought it was important for the students to be able to do this. So, I authorized it to be put on the agenda last minute with the assumption that this would not happen again, and that we would get all the proper paper, paperwork needed in order to do this properly. I will not accept it again for any, any other agenda because this has happened several times. But I felt it was very important for our students to be able to attend to this.
Madam Chair, I, I understand that, and it will be important next time as well, if it happens the fourth time. What, what I feel is happening with these kind of decisions is that we are, are essentially being, being forced to vote on the items that we decide and are not recommended by the superintendent. That should not be on the agenda. So, we are really getting blamed either way. If this, if it doesn't pass tonight, it is not going to be the administration, the school administration, that is going to take the hit. Not the building, not the superintendent, not, not the athletic director. It's going to be the school committee because we voted it down. I don't think that's fair to this board. If an item is not recommended by the superintendent to be brought for, for, for a recommendation and affirmative vote, I, I disagree that we should be the ones making these decisions. Thank you.
Mr. Lazo?
I agree with a lot of what my fellow colleague said. Taking a beating for the kids seems to be what we do. I'd just like to make a motion to accept this proposal with the approval of the administrator, superintendent, and making sure that we follow all our criteria in our policy manual with quarry checks and everything to the letter of the law, and then send out the paperwork when it's finalized to each and every school committee member.
Second.
I have a motion on the table to accept the trip presented to this evening by Mr. Davies and seconded by Dr. D'Amico. Discussion, Mrs. Principay?
Through you to Scott. Do you want to add that under School Committee Action?
Yes, but I, I, the way, I, how do I say this nicely? I personally think we've been out of order on a lot of stuff, so I thought maybe we could just do this one also. It should be under School Committee Action.
Mr. Lazo?
All, all School Committee Action should be under School Committee Action. That's why we call it School Committee Action. But I'll wait till School Committee Action, Madam Chairman, if that, if that's what you want.
That's what I would like, thank you, under School Committee Actions. So, can we withdraw the motion at this time?
I'll withdraw that motion until we get under the-
Thank you, and a second?
No, withdraw the second.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. I had two questions.
Oh, we don't have a motion, but she's still, you have, still have questions for Mr. Davies?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Mr. Davis. Do you do this in the spring as well with any of your baseball teams? I'm just going from recollection, I thought that you had come in the past for other teams.
Baseball, softball.
And what time of year do you come before the school committee usually for that type of trip?
I, I don't actually recall exactly. Probably, you know, a month or so.
I was just curious, do we run into that same issue when, as far as filing the paperwork, when the spring field trip comes along? Or is this just an issue that we have with getting reservations in order for the fall?
Well, it just, this time of year, it's, it's, it's very difficult, I think, as people know, to go to the Cape for $15. You know, so, most of the campgrounds are closed, so like Ms. DeGigora was saying, you know, this is something that it's really worked on even last spring. But just the planning of it, until the other day, you know, this is where this campground said, okay, we will reopen, we'll turn, turn the water back on. You know, I apologize for, for the lateness. But we also have other teams that have committed to play us. So, in the spring, we, we have one hotel, because it's not in season, where this gentleman, again, allows us to go. They stay in a hotel, and it's a lot cheaper. This time of year, the Cape is still in season, and, you know, we can't, our kids, we can't afford to stay in hotels this time of year, so.
Do you stay at the same campground every year?
It's the same campground last year as this year.
We've tried to call two other campgrounds that never returned. Once they, one returned our call about a week later, saying that they had already had a group that had booked that weekend, and the other campground, or the other YMCA day camp facility never returned calls. This started before school, we, I, we started this before school started. And, you know, we kind of had a hands tie. Depending on the amount of children that were going to be playing on the teams. So, we are in, you know, we are lax, and like I said earlier, that we did not get the paperwork. But we just got the final, final figures, final phone call on, I believe it was Friday afternoon.
Okay, because my feeling is best practices need to be followed, and we need to be as proactive as best as we can. And it's no surprise that we, that you want to do this year after year. And then it'll be no surprise from spring that you want the baseball team and the softball team to have the same type of opportunity. And I'm all for the kids having that opportunity. So, I'd like to recommend that if there's any way to make a deal with your campground people, knowing that this is something you want to do, call them in the spring and say, can we still get that same rate come end of September? You know, that type of thing, to, to avoid this type of thing. Because it isn't fair to the kids to not allow this. I think this is very important. And my second question was relative to the quarry checks. Are any of your chaperones, have they, are they prior chaperones, or have any of them been quarried before? Are they within that three-year limitation to be authorized to be a chaperone?
They, they are authorized. I mean, for example, one is Jan's husband.
All the quarry checks are handled through my office. We make sure that everybody they give us that has a quarry check-
Okay, so that'll be taken care of.
That's all handled through my office.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, well, thank you very much for presenting that with us this evening.
Looking like a letter from us.
I'll, I'll talk to you. If they, if they pass the motion tonight, then we'll sit down and get the right paperwork in place.
And, thank you. Before moving on to the next agenda item, which is item eight, reported to the superintendents, I would like to take a five-minute recess. I do have an important phone call that I do have to make, so I apologize for the recess, but it is very important. So, we'll have a five-minute recess. So we'll have a five-minute recess. Ready? Okay, thank you. We'll reconvene at this time and continue on with agenda item number eight, report of the superintendent.
Yes, we have quite an extensive list of staff members that we've added up to now. You have it in your packet. I'm not going to read every name, only because it is quite extensive and with the time, we'll save some time. But I do want to recognize Roland Gabriel, who's here this evening. He is the final administrator that added, we added to our team. I think he's talking to somebody back there. Roland, wake up. Roland, stand up. Roland is our new math director. He took over right at the beginning of the year, obviously, late in the year. So we welcome him aboard as one of our new administrative administrators and team member. Thank you. And then we have, as you can see, a large list of new hires and replacements. And I have, and some folks you have already met, but that's the complete list of the new hires. The grand opening ribbon-cutting ceremony has been scheduled for the 26th at 6:00 P.M. at the new middle high school. We have been working with the town manager's office to create a database and list of dignitaries who need to be invited. The invitation has been, or is being printed, should be done this, in the next day or two, and we'll be sending those invitations out, and I know that the community, I can't remember the name of that committee.
Communication.
That rather long list of name of the commu, that last committee on there is going to be working on some dovetailing, some activities in the community around that, around that event. So, I know that there's, they'll be working extensively to get some things set up for the community, but the community is invited to the ribbon-cutting, obviously, as well as the subsequent celebrations around the opening of the new building and the ribbon-cutting. So, that will happen on the 26th of September at 6:00 P.M. And right now, we're scheduling it six to eight, and then from there, we'll have other, I think, other plans that'll be developed by the committee, the subcommittee. Also this evening, I want to introduce Dr. Paul Livingston, who's here with us this evening, if he would stand up. Paul is a retired superintendent from a number of districts, lastly, I think, Penn Tucket Regional, and he is our new plan manager. He is part of the team that you saw there today with Nadine Bonda and Ava Mitchell. They're on the accountability and monitoring side of the accelerated improvement plan process. Paul is on the support side, working with School Works, and also working with Linda Foizie on the support side of the accelerated improvement plan for Level Four districts. And he is in the district about halftime and working remotely at times as well. And he has been working with my team since about a month ago, just toward the end of July, we got in early to talk about redoing our accelerated improvement plan and resubmitting. We resubmitted a few days ahead of time on September 2nd, and we are yet to get some direct feedback, but we'll be getting direct feedback very, very shortly, and I think there's a couple of things we'll have to tweak. But the accelerated improvement plan, we had vetted by a number of people at the state level already. It's very well received. This is the new iteration, the one for 2012, 2013, and we are currently implementing that. So you will get a copy of that in next week's, in the next school committee packet. Hopefully, you'll get the revised version of that if we get the changes made that were requested. So, that again will become official. We're implementing it as we speak today. So that would conclude my, actually, let me, one more thing I want to add, is we've been doing some enrollment discussions, and I've asked the principals to send me enrollments, and a number of them did today. Right now, it looks like, from the numbers I saw briefly this morning, both West Street School and Charlton Street School are exactly at 470 students. One maybe at 471, you're at 471 at West Street. We projected 470 at West Street and 460 at Charlton Street, so it looks like the population at Charlton Street might have picked up about 10 kids from last year, projecting. The middle high school, we projected at 1,035 students, and I believe the last number I heard was 1,044. So that building was built for 1,050 students, so we're at 1,044 right now. So the building is at what they would call capacity from the state level. And I believe our kindergarten started, I know our kindergarten started yesterday, and I believe we have 184. Is that right, the latest number? Yes. 189 kindergarteners started yesterday. We will have more, as we know. And we also have preschool that has four classes running, both morning and the afternoon. That'll run about 80 students, so, pardon me, 90 already. So that would put our enrollment right at 2,240, somewhere in that neighborhood, roughly. I don't have the exact math in front of me, 'cause I had the one wrong number and didn't have the pre-K number. So it looks like we're going to be up a little bit. We were at 2,204 this time last year, so it looks to me like we're probably going to be up in enrollment across the district, probably by about 20, 25 students initially here. We'll see how it is October 1st, but it looks like our enrollment's up just a little bit. We have had a number of students who have come back from school choice. I don't have the exact number, but I know I've had people inquire and people come back. I've also taken in about a half a dozen, maybe seven or eight, school choice students from other districts to come to the new middle high school. So, things are looking up on the enrollment front, and that will conclude my report.
Thank you, Dr. D'Amico.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the superintendent. The new hires report for the school year, Eric.
Yes.
I would like to see, this is a significant number of positions. I don't know how, do you know how many? I haven't counted them.
I don't know.
It's about 25, maybe.
Yeah, probably.
New positions. Would it be possible to provide us, who are they replacing?
Sure.
And where in the budget these positions are tied, and what positions are new based on the proposed budget? I think it's important, and without getting personal with our new director of math, I don't think Roland is a new hire.
Nah, he's not a new hire.
Roland has been with us for quite a while and ended up on a wrong list. Happens all the time.
He's a new hire in this position, so...
He's a new appointment.
And we're happy to have him, but he's been around a few years as a math teacher at our middle high school, or at our high school, and done a great job, so we're thankful to have him.
And the last question, BCBA, a subject grade, what would that be?
BCBA is behavioral, the applied behavior analysis. That is a special education program for autistic students. It's, that's a particular certification that they need, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mrs. Donovan, did you have a question?
Yeah, first of all, my first question was exactly the same thing, what does BCBA stand for? And then my second question was, if Ms., through you to the superintendent, if you could just explain that the open house date for West Street School has now changed as a result of the ribbon-cutting ceremony.
Yeah, when we went to look for times to do the ribbon-cutting for the new middle high school, we were kind of given the direction from the school building committee to do it at the, sort of, the third or fourth week of September. We thought the third week was too quick to get planned. We looked at the fourth week and settled on the 26th, but that required us to transfer or to move the West Street School open house, which we had originally just taken from one year to the next and rolled the calendar over. And we've actually have made a couple of changes in our, in our schedule of events, and one of them is now that we have the two, one through five elementaries, they don't have to have their open house on separate nights, because they don't serve the same families. So we can have them on the same night, have, you know, a big open house for all of our elementary on the same night, which is the 27th. We also are going to be taking our, what is on the calendar right now, as a middle school open house and a high school open house, and we're consolidating those into one open house for the new building.
Is that one date?
Yes, one date, but I don't have the date. Do you have the date? The 20th or 21st, I believe. So we'll be, that will happen fairly quickly, so...
I just want to say, 'cause I was looking into that, I know the original district calendar had 19 for the middle, 1920. Is it still 1920? 1920.
So what we actually, what happened was, when we did the calendar, we rolled the dates from last year's calendar over, the calendar of events, and we just didn't consolidate where we can consolidate.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda, item number nine, report of the business manager, Mr. Wiggins.
No formal report this evening, but I do have a letter that you voted on last meeting for, actually, for me to send, but I think the committee wanted to sign as well to the town manager. And just to clarify, if you remember, there were some numbers. I was going to refine that letter, so the actual number that we would be requesting from the town manager and the town council from free cash would be 108,494.35.
Sorry, can you repeat it?
Chair, are you going to send that down so they can read it and sign it?
I am going to send that down, starting, and each of you has a named place to sign it. In fact, I'm going to send down a pen, too, 'cause it happens to be blue. So...
It gets way bad.
Okay.
You want the pen?
Everyone get a pen?
Start from here, sorry.
I have a blue pen if anybody needs one.
Dr. D'Amico, did you have another question?
Yes, Madam Chair, you said you adjusted the number. I remember we took a vote on...
Up to 112,000.
Oh, it was, so we don't have to redo the motion.
You do not need to re-vote it.
Thank you.
I can move on. All right, so the next agenda is agenda item 10, school committee actions. A, we need a motion to vote to approve the school, the Southbridge Middle High School activities clubs for the 2012, 2013 school year. Do you have a motion? Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second, and we have discussion. Mrs. Principay.
Yes, through you to the business manager, Mr. Wiggins. This is something that I don't recall doing in the past. Is this for record-keeping, or...
This is for accounting. The school committee is the final determination of what is a student activity in regards to student activity accounting and the student activity accounts. And so typically, what would happen, and should have happened, frankly, is once a year, you would get a list of student activities that you would approve, like this list. You approve them, and then these become the activities in the middle school and the high school, and we're going to work with the elementary principals. You may get a much, usually a much shorter list at the elementary schools a little bit later, where these groups can go out and raise money, and they can do the things that their particular club would do, and it is truly classified as a student activity. Again, under student activity accounting, if you don't declare it as a student activity, it's a gray area. Frankly, I didn't know that you had to do it this way either, until I was in Georgetown, and we brought in one of the state's premier folks to do training on student activity accounting, and one of the first things he said, which was also one of our audit findings, was, oh, by the way, your school committee is supposed to define the student activities on an annual basis.
Thank you.
Any other questions, or do you have any more questions, Mrs. Principay? Dr. D'Amico.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What I see in front of us is not a list of clubs or student activities. What I think I see is a list of positions that need to be compensated for to run different activities. This is not a list of clubs. Yearbook Business Editor, Yearbook Editor, this is clearly not two different clubs. So, in formulating the motion, if we are voting for a number of clubs or activities is one thing, but what we have in front of us is not what the motion is proposing.
Mr. Wiggins.
Actually, I would have to agree. What you should see in front of you is the clubs, and I confess, I did not look at the list before it went in your packets. I apologize. The advisors are paid as part of a collective bargaining agreement. Those stipends are set, okay? The clubs would, for example, be art club, jazz band, wind ensemble, newsletter. But you do have some things in here that are actually advisors that would not be part of your student clubs. I agree. And I think I would ask you not to vote on this tonight.
Mr. Lozlo.
Motion to postpone till next meeting.
Second. All right, we have a motion to postpone to the next meeting and a second. Any other discussion on the motion to postpone? Seeing none, all in favor, or roll call, please, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozlo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Motion passes, so we'll postpone this to the next meeting. Mr. Lozlo.
I'd like to make a motion to create 10B. My motion would read, to approve the annual athletic field trip to Mashpee, Mass. on September 21st and 22nd of 2012.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and Max, did you get that motion, or do you want me to repeat it? It's an emotion, an emotion, a motion to approve the annual athletic, actually, Mr. Lozlo.
Mashpee, Mass. from 9/21 to 9/22.
Correct, and we have a second. Is there any other discussion on that, Mrs. McLaughlin?
Should that motion include the language of boys and girls soccer and field hockey teams?
If you would like to have that on there, that's fine.
All right, Max, we can add boys and girls field hockey and soccer teams to that motion?
Girls.
Yes.
Motion to approve the annual athletic field trip for the boys and girls soccer teams and the girls field hockey team to Mashpee, Mass. from 9/21...
Motion to approve the annual athletic field trip for the boys and girls soccer teams and the girls' field hockey team to Mashpee, Mass. from nine twenty-one to nine twenty-two, twelve.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mrs. Donovan?
I was just questioning, there was discussion on whether or not we wanted to ensure that Mr. Davis provided the proper paperwork to the superintendent's office and query checks and whatever else paperwork was needed to be filed in order for the trip to be approved pending the submittal of those papers.
So, well, Mr. Lazo?
Can we vote to put this on the agenda, and then after you can discuss the main motion once it's on the agenda?
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call?
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Seven yes, motion passes. Mr. Lazo?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion. Um, now that the motion is on there, I will move the motion.
Motion to move the motion?
In other words, we just created a motion to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Now we made ten B. Now the motion is on the agenda. I move the motion and get a second. Now you can discuss it, vote it, and approve it.
All right, we have a motion to move the motion by Mr. Lazo, seconded by Mrs. Principay, and now do we have a discussion? Is there any discussion? Mr. Lazo?
Uh, just a quick reminder of what Kara was talking about as far as the, the whole policy manual and our, um, our rules and regulations on field trips and make sure that the administration, athletic director, superintendent check off on it before, uh, it gets in writing and they can send the paperwork out to us.
Any other discussion? Dr. D'Amico?
I'd like to amend the motion to, to contain, uh, pending approval of the building and the super, building administrator and the superintendent.
Second amendment.
Okay, so we have an amendment to add to the motion, the approval of the principal, superintendent...
Principal of the building and the superintendent.
Principal of the building and the superintendent. And we have, and it's motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? What's that, Max? Yeah, Scott's seconded.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. McLaughlin?
Could we just have the motion restated?
Sure.
As... No, can't do that.
It's just amendment.
This is amendment.
Discussion the amendment. Once we amend it, then we'll have the main motion as amended.
Thank you, apologize.
Roll call?
Roll call to amend?
Yes, a roll call to amend, please.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Ms., Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Seven yes for me.
Thank you. The amendment passes. Now I'm confused, so... The main motion...
Main motion as amended.
The main motion as amended. Do I have a... Roll call, please.
Discussion.
Did you want to hear the amendment?
Yes, yes, and I have, is now the appropriate time to ask where to be restated? Where are we, Max?
Motion to approve the annual athletic field trip for the boys and girls soccer and girls' field hockey teams to Mashpee, Mass. from nine twenty-one to nine twenty-two, two thousand and twelve, pending approval of the principal of the building and the superintendent.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on that main motion? No further discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to the next agenda is agenda item number eleven, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business this evening? Anyone? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, uh, which is item number twelve, new business. And under the new business, I have the next regular school committee meeting will be held on September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve, at the council chambers at seven P.M. Is there any other new business? Mr. Lazo?
Just a quick comment. Uh, I was at the middle high school, and I noticed that there were some arrows painted, and I just want the public to know that that's not graffiti. It was just an oversight by a excited coach about cross-country that painted the arrows, and, uh, we're going to have them removed, and we're going to probably use parking lot chalk or markers from DPW or some other way of marking the track. But, uh, when I pulled in, I was kind of surprised. I said, "Oh, no," but, uh, I talked with the administrator, and, uh, it'll be all taken care of. There's not, no reason to panic.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. McLaughlin?
Um, I'm sorry. I just, um, I realized that tonight, since our last meeting, school opened, and I'm just wondering if, how's, how's it going? I don't, we have a lot of our, with all our building principals here, it'd be nice to hear, how are things? Anybody?
I don't know how you want to handle this. Uh, you know, I do have the principals here this evening, uh, and obviously school started. Uh, but if they want to come up and, and give a, a, a brief, I know, I think Mr. Montigny may have left, uh, so not everybody's still here.
Okay.
But what I would prefer to do is wait till the next meeting and have them formally come up and talk about the first month of school.
Fabulous.
And talk about the progress that's been made. It might make it, put them on the agenda, and then they'll have a plan. I would, I don't like to put them on the spot.
Okay, thank you.
I ask Mr. Lazo?
Just a quick comment. I happened to, uh, go to Southbridge High School opening day. Um, it was, it was kind of, I was still surprised that Southbridge had the school that we have. It was like a mirage. I just didn't want it to disappear. Uh, I think the kids were, were fantastic. I thought it was very smooth. They used both entrances as far as the, the students and stuff, but, uh, just to see the kids' faces, I mean, it was outstanding. And I know that I've received a tremendous amount of phone calls with all types of things on the school building, on different things, but like, uh, the superintendent has said, sometimes you're better off waiting, so we can knock a lot of the bugs out of the, some of them are building issues, some of them are just, you know, the first week of school. I thought, uh, I thought it was pretty smooth for opening day, and I think the kids really enjoyed it.
Thank you. Anyone else for new business? Mr. Wiggins, did you have?
Well, I was just mentioning that one of the reasons my office is so neat is because it's packed up in boxes. And we are in the process of actually moving our offices up to Twenty-Five Cole Avenue. So, that is a process that will hopefully be finished with us moving the end of this week. The phones are in the process of being moved. But one way or another, we will make sure that somebody is answering our phones. Uh, if we happen to get up there a day before our phones get up there, somebody will still be answering our phones and making sure that there's communication happening to the central office. So, I want to let the public know that we're not going to be without communication, uh, even if there's a little bit of a lag between when the phones are supposed to be moved up there and, and when they actually get moved up there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. D'Amico?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a follow-up. Is entire central administration moving to Cole Ave? This is the first I've heard that you're moving the business office to Cole Ave.
No, this, this has been the plan.
No, go ahead, Mr. O'Leary. Scott's already gone a couple times, so...
I'll defer to him, 'cause I know he was part of this discussion.
Okay, go right ahead.
But, uh, the, go ahead. I'm sorry, Scott.
We're on the same channel.
Uh, Mr., you go right ahead.
With all due respect, uh, this has been in, uh, in the pipe for quite a while, uh, the reuse of Southbridge High School. Um, I know that there are a lot of different things that we'd like to do, a lot of different things that we're trying to do. Uh, there are so many timelines. Uh, administration was going to move up to the, uh, the new high school, uh, I mean, the old high school, and, uh, we were going to move different offices up, and Eric will comment to the, the superintendency portion, but we had an ad hoc committee, um, with the previous school committee, and it was to reuse the high school, um, in an entrepreneurial approach with some collaborative work, some, uh, you know, I know that the TV channel looked at our band area. There are no guarantees on a lot of the stuff that's, that's in the, uh, irons in the fire, but I think as, as, as a community, that, that building can be used for community use. And, um, by creating some space up here for the town manager, who will probably be moving upstairs from what I understand, um, it's a good move all the way around, and, uh, the building will be occupied, and it's, it's much better set up for our central office, business, curriculum, and everything up at the new high school with what we have. But that's been in the pipe for, uh, over a year. We've just been waiting for all these moves, and I must say, gentlemen, nobody has moved more moves than the Southbridge school system this year. It's unbelievable. And, uh, if anybody in any other districts needs advice, call Southbridge. We moved everything.
Yeah. The, and, and just to follow up on Mr. Lazo, we, we are, uh, planning to occupy the main office area and the prox- proximal areas to that. The, the guidance area, the, the, uh, what was the in-school suspension room, uh, will become the special ed office. Uh, it's, it's bigger than what they have now, much, much nicer than what they have now. Then, uh, the business office will be taking the guidance suite, uh, the administration, uh, Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Assessment, and I will take the main office suite. Uh, and then our curriculum directors will take, uh, a corner of the building, uh, down to the left, uh, as you go up the ramp. And we're trying to create a professional development and a curriculum and instruction center there in that corner, uh, where, where the computer labs are and things. And then, uh, we are working on a lease agreement, and we've had the attorneys working on a lease agreement with the Worcester County Community Action, uh, to put head start there, uh, in the academic wing. So, uh, we believe that we'll be bringing to you a lease agreement with them. Uh, we've been talking to them, and they've been talking to us quite a while now. Uh, and then we've also, I think, had interest from a number of other community organizations to use the auditorium, do some pre-creative things there. Uh, we've been approached by the teachers' union to use a, a, a room in the building, in the building as their office space. We've been approached by a number of different organizations to use the gymnasium. So, we have a, a chance here to create, uh, and I've also been in discussions with, uh, the, uh, Consignum and Community College to maybe do some things in that building as well. So, we, we think we have the beginnings of a, a good community center for education in that building. Uh, and, and we'll, we'll bring more things to you in writing once we have things, uh, ready to present to you, uh, as, in terms of any kind of lease agreement or anything like that.
Uh, thank you. I think it's important. Yeah, I'm hearing questions around town. Well, what are they planning to do with the old high school? And I'm, I'm, I'm glad that there are plans and there's interest and that things are underway, uh, and the public, uh, obviously needs to know. And, and I think the parents especially, that, uh, do you have a timeline on at least, uh, the school department, central administration relocating and being available in the other building?
No. Well, we've, we are planning on actually, um, moving physically our location through the rest of this week, and we should be working in the new building next, in the, in Twenty-Five Cole Avenue next week. Uh, that's pending some phones. I mean, what we could possibly have is somebody sitting on a lawn chair over here in the office answering the phone, uh, until we get the phone, 'cause we have to have somebody answering phones. Uh, and I, I think I have a number of volunteers who would love to sit in the office, lock themselves in, and only answer phones. That, but we're working on that, but we do have, uh, a, a plan to, to, uh, to move physically. Uh, and then we obviously have to move and change the address, and we still will be transitioning from here, 'cause there are a number of things here that we have to move. But, but we do have things staged to make that move. Uh, but we have been debating even still whether or not we're physically able to make that move this week, 'cause we have done so much moving, and we've quite frankly lost some of our movers to, you know, the unfortunate world of college. Uh, so, I think we have a few kids still working, but that, those are the, those are the people who've done a lot of moving for us. But we think we have a plan, uh, and, and, uh, I think the bigger question is overall use of that building and where we can go from a, from a revenue standpoint for the district to offset some cost of maintaining a building that we, that we, that we have to maintain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, just a point of clarification on the Mary Wells Building. We have no interest in using it as a school district, and at some point it will be turned over to the town, and I know that that's been a discussion around town, so just a point of information. Thank you.
And one, I'm sorry, but, but one thing I think I should add about Mary Wells is, right now, what we are doing is we're separating current district furniture in the two middles, in the middle school and the old high school, into what we consider to be things we want to keep that we could potentially use in our district and things that quite frankly have lived their usefulness. And now that that separation is pretty much complete, uh, Mr. Wigan and I are going through that building tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, Wells, that is, and we're going to just to verify that what's there is not usable or we believe is surplus, and then the town will be, it'll be turned over to the town, quite frankly, uh, to, to dispose of, uh, the proper way. And then we still have maintained a, a large amount of inventory at the old high school in certain locations if we need furniture for any of our other buildings. And all the technology has been, that, that's usable, has been kept at the old high school.
There, there will be one other, just to interject, there will be one other step in that after the superintendent and I go through the building tomorrow morning, there will be an inventory of all of those items. That will come to you in your meeting on the twenty-eighth for you to declare a surplus, much as you have done others. And again, that's not going anywhere until you declared surplus. After you do, we would essentially indicate that the building and the items in the building are of no interest to us, and the town could take them and dispose of them in whatever they feel is their best interest.
Alrighty. Let's move on to the next agenda, please, and that's agenda item number thirteen, school committee reports. A, curriculum subcommittee. Mrs. Donovan?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I will be meeting this Friday with our, our new director of curricular, uh, curriculum instruction and assessment. And then thereafter that, I will set a meeting, and I will be able to announce that meeting at our next regular school committee meeting on the twenty-fifth. Thank you.
Thank you. B, policy subcommittee, we will be having a meeting on September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve, at six P.M. before our regular school committee meeting. And that's all I have right now. C, budget facilities and transportation subcommittee. Dr. D'Amico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we will schedule a budget facilities and transportation subcommittee meeting for the first week in October.
Thank you. D, collective bargaining subcommittee. Mrs. Principay?
There's no meeting scheduled at this time. I do believe, however, the, um, our former chairman received a request from the president of the S.E.A. to open, um, negotiations, so I will check into that, um, this week with, um, president of the S.E.A. and, um, our superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. And E, community and family and community engagement subcommittee. Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I requested a meeting. It's been posted, I believe, or it's gone to the town clerk's office to be posted for Monday, September seventeenth, six o'clock in the Larry Hyman Conference Room.
So, you said Monday, September seventeenth?
Correct. Six P.M.
Sixteenth, sorry. Um, I may be wrong, not, not to interrupt you, but I believe that you, the subcommittees for the school committee need to go through the superintendent's office? I believe.
Yeah. We did.
So, we did go through them first. Okay.
But I think, I think there's a typo on this. I think, I don't think it's the community and family and community. It's communications.
Communications, yeah, it should be communications.
And family and community engagement.
Correct.
Correct.
All right, thank you. Next agenda item, number fourteen, executive session. Any motion to vote to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for union and non-union personnel or litigation to the extent that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining of litigation position of the governmental body pursuant to chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, part three. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Thank you, and a second? Second, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Okay, we will vote later to conclude executive session and return to open session for adjournment only. Thank you.